Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call, see that all council members are present. I'd like to welcome those who are here tonight with us, as well as those who may be watching at home this evening. We'd like to begin this meeting by an invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I've asked council member Hatch if he'd offer the pledge of allegiance, and I'll lead us in the invocation. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for the privilege we have to meet tonight as council members, and for the city of Cholo and staff. Father, we're grateful for this community in which we live, and for the peace that we enjoy here and the beauty surroundings. We're grateful for this fall season, and for the beautiful colors and the things that are beautiful on this earth. Father, we ask you to bless us as we deliberate things concerning the city, that we might make good choices and decisions, and be guided by thy direction. We're grateful for those men and women who serve in our armed forces, and we pray that thou will watch over and protect them. We pray that thou will be with the leaders of our nation, that they'll have a desire to serve thee, and to remember the good things about this country, and the freedoms and liberties that they'll protect and honor those. And we ask thee to be with us in our deliberations this evening, in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public doesn't see this, but our Public Works guys, you guys look sharp. I just want you to know that. You know, you're looking good tonight in the audience here. Guys in ties and everything, it's super. Tonight, we have call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda may do so at this time. Seeing that nobody moved forward, we'll close call to the public and come back to the consent calendar. We do need to pull item 6B from the consent calendar. We'll have a presentation on that a little later here. Items we have is a proclamation proclaiming October 16th through the 22nd as Arizona Cities and Towns Week, and then the minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting, October 4th, 2016. We have a motion by council member Alsop, seconded by council member Crittenen. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. This time, I'll read the proclamation for the Arizona Cities and Towns Week. Whereas the citizens of the city of Cholo rely on local government to experience a high quality of life in our community, and whereas local governments in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver city services such as police, public works, and emergency services, to create safe and viable communities; and whereas the methods of funding these vital city services are not always clearly understood by citizens, whereas it is one of the responsibility of city officials to ensure that legislators, media, and citizens understand their local government through open and frequent communication using various avenues and means; and whereas it is important to work to encourage this connection and inform citizens of the importance of state shared revenues to preserve the excellent delivery of services that our citizens have come to expect in our city; and whereas through education and awareness, citizens, community leaders, and city staff works together to ensure that service provided by the city of Cholo remain exceptional elements of the quality of life of our community. Now therefore, I, Darryl Seymour, Mayor, on behalf of the Cholo City Council, do hereby proclaim October 16th through October 22nd as Arizona Cities and Towns Week, and in observance of this event, the city of Cholo will host third graders as they tour municipal facilities to introduce the students to the workings of local government dated this 18th day of October 2016. This time, we'd like to just show a short video clip of our cities at work here.
Have you ever thought about what goes into constructing and maintaining your city or town streets? Besides pavement and street signs, there's much more than meets the eye, and more expense than you might think. Sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, space for parking and bike lanes are all part of what we see, but beneath the surface, there's even more that we do not see. There are water and sewer lines, storm drainage systems, and other systems, plus the costs of maintenance, repair, and sweeping to keep streets clean and safe. Cities and towns plan, budget, build, and maintain streets and roads, so you can get to school, work, and home safely every day. Learn more about how your Arizona Cities and Towns work by visiting azcityswork.com.
As you can see, it's that simple to keep the city going. So, that's why the guys can wear ties tonight. So, at this time, we're gonna have the presentation of our snow management plan by Rick Austin and Ryan Hall that come up. Just want to give a little tidbit here. Recently, we had a contest here with our cities and other cities and counties, and it's kind of a rodeo out there, and Mr. Ryan Hall, he organized this and put it on, and it's just one of the great events that a lot of these guys get to show their skills and things, and we just want to appreciate you guys and let you know, thank you for what you do, and you guys do look great.
Thank you.
This time, we'll have the presentation of our snow management plan. You guys are expecting a lot of snow this year, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Every year.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for letting Public Works come and do this presentation to you on the 2016-2017 snow plan. Here to help me with the presentation is Ryan Hall, the street supervisor, and Matt Armejo, the wastewater collection supervisor. The city is split into 14 routes that 28 plow operators are responsible for. The main pieces of equipment include four 10-wheel trucks, two six-wheel trucks, three loaders with plows, a road grader, and several pickups for cul-de-sacs and smaller rideaways. During a snow event, these two individuals are responsible for coordinating removal operations and call-out by either me or police department. Snow removal is classified into four levels. Level 1 is reserved for 1 half-inch to 2 inches of snow. When the snow starts to fall, Ryan, Matt, and myself will start monitoring the streets for any slick areas that may need treatment such as cinders, or a mix of de-icer and cinders that were pre-approved by council. Excuse me. Level 2 is reserved for 2 to 3 inches of snowfall. At this point, Public Works is out making sure all the school bus routes, collector streets, transit routes, and city-owned parking lots remain open by a combination of light plowing and cinder spreading. Other Public Works staff at this point is being put on standby for a full call-out. Level 3 is reserved for 3 or more inches of snow, and triggers a full call-out of two 12-hour shifts that are supervised by Ryan as a A-shift coordinator, and Matt as a B-shift coordinator. Public Works is split between the two shifts, and snow operations continue until the streets are open and passable to traffic. After the snowfall has ceased, streets will be widened, and staff will begin snow berm removal process on the approved updated list. Clearing sidewalks around City Hall typically falls under the parks and recreation area of responsibility. Public Work follows the predetermined sidewalk list that is in the plan. Level 4 is reserved for a severe event that triggers a haul-off of snow that impedes traffic and rescue efforts to pre-designated dump sites. During a snow event, the airport will be conducting brake action tests on the runway, and Beaumont, I'm gonna try AFM2 deceler meter or equivalent to determine what action needs to take place to keep the airport functional. As the need arises, additional resources and manpower may be rotated to assist the snow removal process. Staff has created a policy regarding mailbox damage due to snow plow operations. Staff recognizes that the post office regularly has the resident put their mailboxes in the city's rideaways, or will not deliver mail to them. This policy allows the residents to put the mailbox in the right-of-way with the proper permitting process, and gives a direction as to what can be installed by the citizen. If damage is reported, the resident has the option to make the claim to the city, have the city replace the mailbox, or fix it themselves, and submit a receipt to the city. Before a claim is paid, a city representative will verify the damage is indeed due to plow operations, and not to other reasons like rotted posts or pre-existing conditions that will be documented by the Public Works Department during pre-snow operation inspections. If it is deemed that the city is responsible for the damage reimbursement of up to $100, or the value of the box will be obtained by the citizen. Public Works will photograph any damage and keep a log, which will include the date, address, type of damage, repaired cost, and material, time, and labor for each repair. Thank you.
Any questions here?
Are you two gonna talk, or?
Next year.
That's how good it was.
I just have a question here on the mailbox, though. If I have something that's real fancy and beyond the $100, that's at my expense because I chose to put it in the right-of-way.
That's correct.
Okay. And so, we just need to, that's something that we need to be aware of as citizens, that, you know, we understand you can have a mailbox out there, but if you choose to have something a little more elaborate, then you are gonna bear that risk of that being damaged possibly.
We actually obtained a GoPro, and we're videotaping the streets now before the snow events, so that we have a record of before, and that existing damage was there.
I was wondering if we could get them to explain our berm removal policy.
Berm removal?
Citizens have to go to their doctor, family doctor, and get an application from the city, and they have to have that signed by a doctor. Then, we put them on a list, and after all, the widening of streets and all that is complete, we'll go through and open up their berms in their driveway.
They have to be a little patient. It won't be the same day, and some storms here, it's only until we've finished clearing the roads, and it's switched snowing, and then we'll come and do the berm. If there's an emergency situation, then they can call out, I'm sure, and we will give some assistance on an emergency situation.
Yeah. Also, too, about, excuse me, for any vehicles that are on a street, we are not permitted to go down any street with a vehicle. We are permitted to call the police department there to come out and talk to the homeowner, or contact Rick. He'll go out and talk to the homeowner for having the vehicle moved.
So, on days when we're expecting snow, it's best if residents will keep their vehicles off of the street, so we can plow.
Yes.
And what I've been doing in the last couple of years is I've been, we've got a form letter that we actually put on the front door, or I knock on the door and hand it to them, and remind them that they have to be off the street before we call the police department.
Yeah. Council member Crittenen?
Quite a few years ago, there was some damage done when we were snow plowing, and I'm saying this kind of for the public. There was some damage done, but the people had done work in the right-of-way as far as putting up decorations, and this and that and other. And does that include mailbox being in the right-of-way? If it's in the right-of-way, is the city still liable for a mailbox?
City Attorney?
Generally, to put anything in our right-of-way, and Bill can correct me if I'm wrong, but you're supposed to have a right-of-way permit to do that. So, if somebody has gotten the right permit, and put something in the right-of-way, and we damage it, then it would be our liability.
Well, for instance, some property is 10, 12 feet right-of-way up a hill in the trees in their house, so how are you gonna put up a mailbox?
Oh, that's, I was getting to that. Let me finish. The policy of the U.S. Postal Service is that they don't deliver the mail unless there's a mailbox in the right-of-way. So, we've kind of had to conform our policy to their policy. And what we've said is, you can put up a regular plain mailbox in the right-of-way. We'll let you do that. And if we damage it, the policy is, we'll go out and replace it up to the $100. But if you put in a fancy carved bear in the right-of-way, that's on you, because it's, again, it's still in our right-of-way. So, we've kind of compromised a little bit on that policy because of the U.S. Postal Service regulations. But it's not gonna be a fancy mailbox. It's gonna be a plain $50 to $60 mailbox that you put out there, that we will replace if we hit it. But if you put something in there that's a fancy carving, and we hit it, that's your responsibility.
But if you have other decorations...
Other decorations where you have not got a right-of-way permit, that's on you.
Very good. I wanted everybody to understand that, yeah.
And also, in the case of the fancy mailbox, if a person came and got a right-of-way permit, and wanted to put in something that was maybe made out of CMU or something like that, we would not approve that permit for that mailbox, because it's a lateral hazard. It'd cause injury to the guy driving the snow plow, too. So, chances are, unless it's grandfathered and been there for a long time, any new installations of fancy decorative heavy steel or concrete mailboxes wouldn't be approved in a right-of-way permit.
Council member Kelly?
Yes. Back to this parking on the street when snow is either forecast, or even could happen. If it turns out to be a repeated offender, I believe our code actually says we can have it towed at their expense. Is that correct?
My understanding, that is correct, yes.
But what you're sharing is routinely, a first offense anyway, you're gonna go and make a courtesy call and say, hey, you know, we can't not only plow for you, we can't plow the street. What are we gonna do? Run out and go around a vehicle? That makes no sense. I've seen that done in the past, and it sure doesn't make for a road that is passable for the people on that road. So, I just think everybody needs to be very disciplined about getting the vehicles off of the roadway when we might need to plow snow.
Yes, sir. It helps a lot that get the vehicles up.
Vice Mayor?
The snow route, the color, is the color thing on this mean any importance at all? Is that priority? Did you?
Well, priorities can change. Them are just the basic routes, and wherever the snow falls the most, 'cause it, you know, go foot over here and 3 inches over here...
But that's what this means, though, this map. Is this published anywhere? Can we put this, like, on our page somewhere, or?
It is published on the internet, if I remember correctly.
Perhaps the television crew could show it real quick, 'cause we have it loaded tonight. Yeah, and Rick can explain a little bit there.
City manager.
I was gonna have Rick explain a little bit about this route map, just so the public can understand.
Well, the colors are just for the, like, for Route 1, everything in red is for Route 1. That's a cinder truck. And Route 2, it's assigned to a truck, and so forth. That's what the colors are on this.
Oh, so the...
The person that's in charge of that route, that's their area.
Okay. So, that's going back to that other page you have on here, where it shows all 14 of the trucks, or that's where they're designated? Okay. That makes sense. So, it's not really a priority. It sort of is, because, I mean, the red, well, I guess not. I guess...
Well, the main priority is pretty much the cinder trucks. Those, you know, they work on the collector streets, Penrod, Wolford Road, Old Linden Whipple, and, you know, with the first call-out level 1, that's when those trucks will go out and work on those roads.
Right. But the one on the map is just Route number 1. So, when we go to a full call-out, we will have 13, or now 14, actually, I think we added another small route. We will have all of those routes, personnel released to those routes at the same time in a full call-out.
Right, okay.
And so, the color coding doesn't have anything to do with priorities. It just has to do with showing where those routes are.
We do do the main connectors first. We try to get Old Linden and Woodford, and Central and all those. If you guys had noticed from last year, we've added a couple more pickup trucks to our routes. We're finding in the smaller streets and the cul-de-sacs, they're a lot faster and a lot safer than trying to get these 10-wheelers down. So, we're trying to steer more towards that, and more towards the safety aspect of trying to get...
One's handling Old Linden, and...
Yeah, the big ones stay on the main, big thoroughfares, and we're trying to keep the pickup trucks in a safer area.
That's good. I just want to, you know, commend you guys for dumping a load of cinders on the city manager last year, 'cause that's great, you know. Helps him, you know, with some things there, too. Just so people know that even city staff get some of the brunt, too, so it's great. Had to throw that in. Guys, thanks for your great job tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If anybody has any questions, just contact City Hall, or go to the website as well. I know it'll be there. Thank you. Next item we have is consideration of award of construction contract for a US-60 waterline realignment project, City of Cholo Project Number W-1116, and approve associated budget transfers. Mr. Hemisaw?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Arizona Department of Transportation Five-Year Capital Improvement Program includes a highway expansion project labeled US-60 Widening, Cholo to Fortieth Street. This project consists of improvements at the intersection of US-60 and State Route 77, and the widening of US-60 from that intersection heading east to Fortieth Street in Cholo. Currently, 95% plans have been completed, and the project construction is tentatively scheduled for the spring of 2017. At this stage, the design utility conflicts have been defined. The city will relocate multiple fire hydrants and other small items to assist in the widening of the project's construction. A long section of water line from the intersection of the Autumn Mall Parkway and US-60 heading east to North 27th Place has been identified to be in conflict. After excavating the proposed roadway and installing new drainage facilities, the existing water line will be too shallow. City staff has been working with ADOT to identify a location for the realignment, and has completed the design. Project consists of installing approximately 825 linear feet of new and deeper 8-inch PVC water line along the existing water, along the existing water line, which will be later abandoned. Project's engineers' construction estimate was $76,000. It was, the project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Apache Underground Excavating at $73,990, Aba Apache Equipment Services at $90,480, Rollin's Specialty Contracting at $91,375, Hatch Construction and Paving at $113,686.20, Western Grade LLC $120,007.75, and JWT Grading at $133,045. Project savings from the Fairway Park Phase 3 Waterline and the Fourth Avenue Waterline Improvement Project, as well as CIP improvement funding, will be used to fund the required realignment. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the US-60 Waterline Realignment Project, City of Cholo Project Number W-1116, to Apache Underground Excavating in amount not to exceed $73,990, and approve the associated budget transfers. The bid tabulation is attached, and I'm available for questions.
Yeah, Vice Mayor?
Just to make sense to me, why, how do you pick where it starts and stops? It seems like if we're gonna do that, why don't we go replace all the way to the next block? I'm just kind of curious.
We do stop at 27th Avenue, which is kind of an intersection, but what's happening in this area right across from the Autumn Mall Parkway is there's a hill. And so, as they widen out that roadway, you're gonna be cutting into that hill, and that, right now, the water line is 15, 20 feet off the existing roadway. It'll be much closer, and we're gonna be going right, we're gonna basically expose the water line that's in place. So, we're just lowering that piece of PVC water line, not keeping it the same size, but just for that hill section. Everywhere else beyond that, it tapers back down to a fill, and the water line drops back off, and it maintains the cover.
Okay.
Council member Crittenen?
For clarification, you say the project consists of installing 825 linear feet of new and deeper 8-inch PVC water line along the existing water line, which will later be abandoned?
The current line that's in place will be abandoned.
Thank you.
We'll install it deeper.
You bet.
I read that before I'm going. I think that's what he means, but I wanted...
Yeah, we don't want to put it in.
Why is it at our expense to lower that water line versus ADOT's?
The discussion we had with ADOT was, unless we have, I believe it was called Prescriptive Prior Rights, in any of the rideaways, any utilities that need to be relocated are done at the utility provider's expense. You've probably already seen Frontier out there, and the gas company's gonna be out there as well, lowering things. So, they're saying they have prior rights to our utilities being in place, so then we are on the hook to remove those facilities. They can do, they've offered to do some of this work at a much higher cost. So, it's been more benefit, and then they would just bill us. So, we'd rather just get it out and get it done ahead of time.
Have a question?
Yeah.
Council member Kelly?
So, there's an existing 8-inch line, and we're putting in an 8-inch line, because it'll be tied on to an existing 8-inch line on both ends. Is that correct? Even though it might look silly at the time, is there an anticipated need for a bigger line, and would it not make sense to, labor being probably almost identical, upsize it a little bit, even in that one spot, so that when we have to upsize the whole thing, we won't have to do that spot?
Well, we did think about that. That line is the single 8-inch that's running out to the east part of town. It's all on a booster system, and is being pumped and fluctuated with the pumps a lot. We, right now, the plan was just to move it over and lower it. We actually considered using the same pipe that's there, but with the rock and issues we had, we will install new. I'm glad you brought that up, 'cause as a side part of this, in preparation for this project, the city's gonna work with ADOT, and we're gonna cross this highway in two separate locations. And we're gonna basically add additional loops in that side of town to increase the flow and pressure, or not really pressure, but the flow of the volume that's out there. So, this is just one piece of what we're kind of planning for the east side of town in preparation for the widening project. We're looking, and we're working with ADOT to cross the highway at the airport road, and create a better loop there to help with fire flows and flows as well, and that will be a 12-inch crossing. And we're looking to cross the highway at one more point further down the road. But we have to do it under the footprint of the project, otherwise, ADOT's not gonna let us go out and cut the road. We have to stay under that project scope. So, we did look at that. Right now, we're just gonna move it over and drop it for now, and do this piece, but we are trying to loop and add better flows in the area prior to the construction of this project.
So, it just doesn't make sense to upsize it at all?
For that small piece, for how long that line is, it's never a bad thing. You're never gonna hear me say it's a bad thing to put big water pipe in the ground. But for right now, and especially it being on a pressure line, we just saw it be just a relocation at this point.
One of the other issues with this water line, too, it is going to be in rock, so there will be rock excavation, and when you put the larger pipe in, we'd probably end up having a foot wider trench. And so, for that 840 feet or whatever, that additional foot is a pretty good expense. I don't know what the cubic yardage price is for rock, but that does drive up the cost quite a bit.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Good question.
Good question. Now, I'll look for a motion. Councilwoman Kukavas?
I move to award the construction contract for the US-60 Waterline Realignment Project, City of Cholo Project Number W-1116, to Apache Underground and Excavating, in amount not to exceed $73,990, and approve the associated budget transfers.
Have a motion. May have seconded by council member Hatch. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? See that that pass seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shane.
Next item we have is a summary of current events. Any council member wishing to speak on current events that they have coming up or have been to? Open that up. Seeing no current events, we'll turn the time to our city manager for any current events he has.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things to report. Our BMX season's coming to an end, and the final two races are this Saturday, October 22nd, and next Saturday, October 29th, at the BMX track at Nicholas Home
22nd, and next Saturday, October 29th, at the BMX track at Nicholas Homestead Park. The fee is $10 per race, and the registration begins at 3:30 PM. Recreation Department and Library are presenting several Halloween-themed activities in October, including an underwater pumpkin hunt for kids ages 10 through 14 this Friday, October 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Clodik Center, and the cost for that's $3 per person. There's a spooky sprint fun run for kids, kids zero to 10 years old, or I guess two to 10 or whatever. Next Thursday, October 27th, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM at Nicholas Homestead Park, and that's $5 per runner. And also, on Thursday, October 22nd, the entire, October 27th, the entire family will enjoy a free Halloween party at the library from 6:15 to 8:00 PM with games, a pumpkin carving contest, costume parade, prizes, and goodies. The Cholo Main Street is gonna present its 7th Annual Spooktacular Festival from noon to 8:00 PM on Cooley and Ninth Streets with trunk-or-treat contests, games, live entertainment, vendors, and a haunted house. Later that evening, from 8:00 to 10:00 PM, Cholo's Recreation Department is sponsoring a carnival and dance for teens ages 13 to 18 at the City Campus Gym at 620 East McNeil. Those tickets are $10 apiece, and costumes are optional. So, there's a lot of Halloween-themed activities the next couple of weeks here. And then, finally, work continues on several Public Works projects around town, including construction of the Public Safety Building on the Deuce of Clubs, upgrading water line and paving the parking lot at the Cholo Museum, which will, should, most of that will be completed by tomorrow or some of it, so they can open it up for an activity they have on Thursday. And then, there's some downtown area improvements. We've also been notified that the box covert at 11th and Hunninge, that's the ADOT project over, that we're doing near the City Hall, is nearing completion. The contractor plans to pour its curbs for that project next week, so hopefully those roads will be open in the near future. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Now, we'll look at this time, scheduling of meetings. Any council member have a meeting they'd like to schedule or bring up? Just encourage everybody to mark on their calendars, the 25th. We also have the meeting on the 20th. On Thursday, we have our Mayor and Council Association in Winslow. Those who'll be going to that. And then, we have our city retreat at City Hall on the 25th from 9:00 AM going forward, and the public is invited to that if anybody would like to spend the day with us. They're welcome, too. We need to go into an executive session where we'll have a confidentiality statement, a discussion, a consultation with attorneys concerning a general adjudication of all rights to use water in the Little Colorado River System. Jay Seaton versus the City of Cholo. Discussion of consultation for legal advice with attorneys, and access for Navajo County Assessor's Parcel Number 309-49-1648. And then, a discussion or consideration of records exempt by law of the executive session September 6, 2016. A motion by Councilmember Alsop, seconded by Councilwoman Kukavas. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. This time, we'll move into executive session. Thank you.